...work session, so sorry we got started a little bit late. If you'll all please rise for the invocation, please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight's invocation will be given by Pastor John McIntosh of the United Church.
Let's pray. Jesus, we thank you for today, we thank you for life, we thank you for love, we thank you for liberty. Coming off of Memorial Day, we do not forget the lives that have gone before us, paid the price for us so that we could inherit our freedom and have freedom here today. We'll also remember the life that you laid down, Jesus Christ, to give us life and liberty and a hope and a future. You have plans of a future and a hope not to harm us but to prosper us, to prosper the city of Fairhope, to prosper the Baldwin County area, God. And we give you this moment, we give you this time, we give you our hearts, our emotions, our conversations. Lead us not into temptation but deliver us from evilness in your name, Jesus, we pray. And everybody, sime.
Amen.
One allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor McIntosh. Okay, council, I had a request to add one thing, I actually had a request to add a couple of things to the agenda. One of them was the addition of the selection of Dewberry Preble Rish for a not to exceed amount of 237,000. I talked to Council President Pro Tim Robinson briefly just a few moments ago and he was not in favor of adding that, and I agree, that's an awful big expense. Jay, was that your?
Yeah, I mean, as many of you know, I'm not a huge fan of walking anything on violation of the rules. With that big a number, it seems prudent to wait and get it advertised and get it done correctly.
Okay, I agree, it'll wait.
It was put in on time.
Okay, there was also, a city attorney just gave me a resolution considering the Antwerp subdivision that would have us go get involved with a contract and services not to exceed 15,465, 45 to reimburse the developer for performing the necessary work in and out of the Antwerp subdivision to accumulate the secondary water line. I believe this was brought up a couple of weeks ago. I can just tell you all, I'm gonna vote against it, so it's not gonna, as far as vote against it to add it on, so it's not gonna get added on. So we need to have these things to us, you know, before six o'clock on Tuesday or six o'clock of the day of a meeting, so. I'm sorry, council, but I'm not in favor of walking that on. So if it comes to a vote, all it takes is one, so I would just say that I'd vote against that. So we can get that on the next one. With that, first item of business is to approve the minutes of the May the 15th regular city council meeting, the work session and the minutes of the agenda meeting. Do you have any additions, deletions, changes to make to those minutes? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the minutes as submitted. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, minutes are approved. Mayor Wilson, your report, please.
Thank you, Council President. First, I want to acknowledge how lucky we are to have missed the brunt of Tropical Storm Alberto. I know everyone prepared for the worst, as we should, and we got the best. Hopefully, we will be lucky as we move forward into the hurricane season, which officially starts this Friday. I want to thank Mobile Baykeepers for the tests that were completed for Fly Creek. It is reassuring to know that during the testing period, most of the pollution, however light it was, can be attributed to natural factors. However, that does not relieve us from continuing our due diligence for our natural resources. We urge all residents along Fly Creek to keep a close eye on their septic tanks and get them repaired when and if needed and as quickly as possible. We received a grant for a new pump out at the Fairhope docks and we will restore pump out services the beginning of June. While we cannot control what happens in the dark at night, we can and will strongly encourage all boaters at the Marina and Transients to use our new pump out. Continuing with our efforts to protect our bay, I want to assure all of our citizens that the breach in our effluent line out in the bay was discovered by our Director of Operations and reported to the council on March 26. It's not sewage. It is treated effluent that is leaking closer to shore than designed, which results in slower distribution to the bay. Two years ago, Dr. Douglas pointed out his suspicion with this breach. Nothing was done until he brought it to Richard Peterson's attention. Richard Peterson arranged to have the line inspected. A driver found the leak about 150 to 200 yards out and reported to council, and options for repair have been investigated. The process Fairhope has in place for moving projects forward is arduous, self-imposed, and needs to be updated. Tonight, the council will vote on a resolution to move ahead with required repair work. All this comes back to the simple fact that from the beginning, even before I ran for office, I had been talking about the state of our existing infrastructure. We built a new sewer plant in 2012, and ever since, we've received many awards and accolades as a result. But the next phase, which was to begin the immediate repair and updating of our sewer lines, never happened. A new plant does not replace degrading sewer lines. Knowing there were critical infrastructure needs still existing, I advocated for another study to prioritize needs, which was completed in August 2017. I included the fix into the 2018 budget in September of last year. Due to the length of time it was taking for council to pass the budget, it was suggested by the Finance Advisory Committee to take all of the infrastructure out of the budget, and the council acted on that recommendation. The budget passed without any infrastructure approval to move forward. Just because it was removed doesn't mean it's not a priority. We must move our infrastructure forward now. I'm thankful we were awarded $10 million from the Restore Act funding so that we can begin sewer rehabilitation next year when the funding becomes available. In the meantime, we have work that must be completed with funding approval, and our Director of Operations has laid out a plan based on priorities and working to be done, work to be done on the most critical areas with recommended personnel to start the work. We need funding for this personnel. It is important to know that we cannot go around digging up sewer lines blindly in an effort to make repairs. Sewer maintenance is an engineering effort. We need the expertise required to conduct SCADA studies, manpower and equipment to examine our lines, to locate weak and broken areas, and be able to prioritize those repairs. We do not have the staff to currently do this, and contracting it out will be more expensive with the knowledge of the process lost. The maintenance will be ongoing forever. It should not be treated as a project for an outside contractor to come in, fix, and leave. Fairhope's infrastructure and building maintenance is at a state where we have to spend money and act fast. I would like more than anything to work with council to find ways to move this forward efficiently. This requires the same motivation from you. We have decades of building maintenance and utility upgrades. Money must be invested in not only rehabilitation but long-term planning as we have been in total reactionary mode with our limited staff to deal with this. As I've shared in the past two budget cycles, our utility department has fewer employees today than it did in 2010 with almost 27 percent growth. It's a matter of handling new growth with new infrastructure in addition to rehabilitating 50 years of neglect. This simply cannot be accomplished with the same number of personnel. We do not have a building maintenance department, much less a project manager to help push projects forward as needed to take care of our big assets. Like all of our departments, it's in reactionary mode, trying to keep up with day-to-day issues. Couple the difficult and time-consuming self-imposed approval and procurement process with a short staff, we simply cannot continue efficiently meeting the needs of our citizens with day-to-day operations, much less spend time continuing to present our critical needs with no action or approval. I need you, council, to make time to meet and discuss these issues, create the same environment of working together as we've created within our city so we can achieve as much as we can in the next two years. I am planning to hold several special meetings over the next month to discuss our critical shortage of personnel in all departments, particularly police and utilities. I want to invite council to not only come to the table to help with this plan, but help us figure out a way to present our needs in a manner that moves projects forward. The city's need to function efficiently and expeditiously must be placed first on our list of priorities, and we can do that by working together. I believe we need to devote time beyond regularly scheduled work sessions, which are limited in time and have been used for objectives that are not as important as this. We need to go over departmental organizational charts to address manpower shortage and skillset needs. These urgent issues deserve more in-depth conversation and should not be held hostage to the budget process. We do ourselves and the city a great disservice when we try to address critical issues in the hour-and-a-half timeframe we have twice a month allotted in the work sessions, especially when council is not willing right now to meet with me beyond these two meetings. At the last council meeting, Councilman Conyers announced that Fairhope graduates this year had received a total of $20,245,000 in scholarships. Baldwin County Schools, as a total, received almost $83 million in scholarships. I am proud to announce that Fairhope High School students received the largest number of scholarship dollars. Congratulations to our teachers who led the students to excellence, and congratulations to the students who worked hard to earn this recognition, and also the parents. In May, we celebrate National Electrical Safety Month. Throughout the month, we have utilized social media to commend our electrical department to remind people of the importance of electrical safety. Tonight, I want to present our electrical department with the Certificate of Excellence and Reliability that was awarded to its members. This is a national recognition of Fairhope's electrical department outperforming the electric industry national average as reported by the Energy Information Administration. Now, I do want to present this, but all of our electric department is now working on the outage that we just experienced, so this is it, and I will be giving it to them tomorrow. So thank you, and that's all.
Thank you, Mayor Wilson. We'll now move to public participation regarding agenda items. Number five is a public hearing, so you'll be given an opportunity to speak to number five when we get to that agenda item. If you would like to speak to items six through 27, you'll come to the podium and state your name and address for the record, please.
Hey, a long time no see, Cade Kissler, 19655 County Road 9. And I think that there's a good impetus to take care of, I believe it's Agenda Item 19, is that the Outfall Agenda Item, anything else get added? Okay, so Agenda Item 19, I think there's a good impetus to take care of. I think that the council is gonna do us a good service by making sure we take care of that issue, but since I was already here to talk about water quality, it seemed relevant for me to come up and just say a few words about that issue, and I think I've heard a few people trying to understand, you know, what's going on, this is treated sewage, is it, you know, a problem, is it not? It is treated sewage, and we're lucky that Fairhope does have a very good treatment plant, as both Councilmember Brill and Mayor Wilson have talked about. Unfortunately, when you get big rainstorms, we mentioned earlier, it can get overworked, and also, you know, it is a process, errors happen, things happen, upsets happen. I think that the Utilities Department has done a great job at the treatment plant from the results we've seen, that treated sewage is typically in really good shape. But just because things can happen, and when things happen and you end up with high bacteria levels coming out of there, you want it to go out the full 2,000 feet and not the 400 or so feet where the breach is now, and so I just hope that the council will make sure they approve that agenda item and take care of that, and appreciate all y'all's time and work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kissler. Anyone else?
Good evening, Sandy Geddes, 11339 County Road 1. I'm here because I am very concerned about item number 19 as well, and my husband and I spend all of our free time in the bay, windsurfing, wakeboarding, water skiing, everything that we can do. So my question is, I understand it's effluent, but I have worked in a water quality testing lab, sorry, I'm nervous. And effluent's not always perfect when it's released, so my question is, is the effluent being tested before it goes into the outfall pipe?
We got someone here from the Water Department that can answer that question. It's a good question. I want to say the answer is yes, but I don't want to make that assumption.
Yes, sir. Please, could you come forward so people can see, I could put you on the spot, but you've kind of become a fixture here, so.
Yes, ma'am, I can tell you that the effluent is tested before it enters the outfall, because typically there is no sample from the effluent plants. It's typically tested right at the plant as it goes into the outfall.
Okay, so the bacteria counts that we're seeing right now, is that attributed to that leak?
I don't think it has any, I don't, I don't see any correlation to that at all right now. You know, when we treat that, the last thing that it does before it leaves that treatment facility is it goes through UV light, which kills all the bacteria. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So I'd still like to say that it is a huge concern for all of us that love the bay and use the bay regularly, and I'm hoping that Volkert will be awarded the job to fix it. Thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Dan Stankowski, 205 White Avenue, Fairhope. Madam Mayor, Council President, council members, with regard to Agenda Item 27, I think the time has come to stop patchworking the repairs of the library, bite the bullet, and pass the bid to repair the library. It's been going on for 10 years, and it needs to be done. We have 200,000 people a year going through the library, and on behalf of the Library Board and the 500 members of the Friends of the Library, I urge you to pass that bid. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ron Allen, 6612 Willow Bridge Drive in Fairhope. Item number 24, approve the procurement of flower planting. I don't care what it costs, do it. It's just so beautiful. And then 27, Fairhope Library, what is envelope repairs?
Exterior.
Okay, that's what, exterior, okay.
Okay, seeing no one else, I'll close public participation. Remember, you do have another chance to address the council and non-agenda items at the conclusion of tonight's meeting. We'll move on to council comments. Councilman Robinson.
Yes, sir, thank you, Council President. I hope everybody had a good Memorial Day weekend. I didn't have any comments at first, but some of the things that Mayor Wilson said prompted me to want to say a couple of things. You know, I do think it is important for all of us to remember going forward that it's not a me agenda or an I agenda, that we all have things that we have to do whether we like it or not to move the city forward in the right way, and it's not all about agreeing with one another, it's about figuring out a way to move the city forward in the most positive way possible, and sometimes that means sucking it up and getting together when you don't agree with things, to figure out a way, to figure out things you can agree with to move forward in a positive way. And I think finding things that you can agree on is the first step in doing that, and I think infrastructure upgrades, again, are one of those things that we all agree have to be done and need to be done as soon as possible, and I think the council has taken those steps to move that forward with some of the recommendations by Mr. Peterson, and I think we're doing that, and I think some of those things are moving forward either in tonight's meeting or will be up on the next agenda's meeting. But regardless, you know, we've got a job to do, and we've got to figure out a way to do it, and do it for the benefit of everybody involved, and I'd like to think we're doing those things and that we'll continue to do those things to do what we were elected to do. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Robinson. Councilman Conyers?
Appreciate it. Just got some upcoming meetings. We've got the Fairhope Historic Preservation Committee meets Thursday of next week at 9:30, although they are considering a time, I mean, a date change to Wednesday to accommodate my schedule, which is very considerate of them, so we'll keep you posted if that does in fact change to Wednesday. Fairhope Environmental Advisory Board meets June 8th, Friday at 3:00 PM. I'm sure we'll be discussing this assessment of Fly Creek in that meeting, and then the Library Committee meets Monday, the 18th, at 5:00 PM at the library. We had some good discussion last Monday regarding this upcoming project, and as much as it hurts, looking at the sticker shock, you know, to echo what Dan said earlier, it does need to be repaired, and I think now is probably the time to proceed and take care of that. To all the teachers, students, and parents, congratulations on another good school year, and hope everyone has a happy and safe summer.
Thank you, Councilman Conyers. Councilman Brown?
Thank you. Again, I want to thank Mobile Baykeeper for giving a report on Fly Creek. Thank you for everybody that's spoken up on behalf of Mobile Bay and our waterways, because they are what makes Fairhope Fairhope. If we can't get in them, we have nothing. So I continue to urge people to come out and express their frustration. This is not a council issue. This council has approved every capital improvement project that's been brought to us. We can't instruct employees, we can't instruct superintendents, anybody else on what they need to do to get this problem fixed. If it comes to us, it's been approved. Everything that's come to us, that's it.
Thank you, Councilman. Brown, Councilman Boone?
Actually, I have no report. I agree with what everybody's saying, there's no sense in being redundant, so I have no report.
I just want to say that I'm glad that we didn't have any impacts from the tropical storm. I do think that some of it was exaggerated, and it hurts our economy, it hurts Baldwin County's economy, and it hurts the state of Alabama's economy. Funny thing was, was John Saraceno in the back of the room was sending us updates, and the Emergency Management Agency wasn't really getting too worked up about it, they kept a level head, and I think that's what you had to do. I heard the mayor, and I know that you would've said the same thing, but you didn't get the opportunity for national news, but the mayor of, I believe it was Panama City, Florida, had said, you know, it's gonna be a rain event, and it rains here, and everybody just hunker down for a little while, and so sometimes it bothers me that, you know, there were fundraisers around the town that were not as well attended, or maybe didn't raise as much money, or it hurts small business tremendously, and I just think that whatever we can do to keep it in perspective, that yeah, we need to be mindful, use common sense, but I think that, I wish the state would consider the impact to the rest of us, being a municipality as an elected official in a town of 20,000 people in Alabama, it really makes a difference what they say. I have some rental property at the Gulf, and I had some people come in from Ohio, and they're just scared to death because of what they're seeing on the news. And I said, just, you know, come on, and I think it'll be fine, you may have to play Uno for a day as it passes through, but everything will be just fine, so let's just keep that all in perspective. I kind of wanted to say that on the record, that sometimes I think that we get a little reactionary and hype it just a little bit too much, and I blame the media a little bit for that, too, so. Anyway, that's all for my report, and we'll move to Item 5 on the agenda, which is a public hearing. This is an ordinance to amend zoning ordinance number 1253, our request to amend ordinance number 1362, lot 19 Fairfield Phase 6 PUD, the property owned by BCLNL Acquisitions, Anil K. Vera, Stephen B. and Cora K. Christensen, I hope I got that name right, and says Gal, I don't know if that's supposed to be Gail, it's Gal Majors, generally located at 655 Norman Lane, Fairhope, Alabama. Would somebody like to introduce the ordinance?
I'll introduce it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. King?
Thank you, Council President, council members. So this item involves an existing lot of, existing lot 19 of the Fairfield subdivision. The lot in the subject property occurs along Booth Road near the intersection of Booth Road and Twin Beach Road. This originated with a request for subdivision of Lot 19 to create lots of record for that lot. The existing conditions, you have three existing units, but there are no lots underneath those existing units. They exist as a condominium agreement for ownership purposes. So we have a prior approved subdivision, approved by the Planning Commission, conditional upon the zoning change. We're here today because the new plat depicting the new lots for this, for the new lots created by the subdivision, that requires an amendment to the PUD ordinance. This is zoned as a planned unit development of PUD, so that requires a zoning change to amend the PUD ordinance, which brings us before the city council for approval. Both staff and the Planning Commission recommended approval, and before we turn it over to the public hearing, I'm happy to answer questions, and also Mr. Rick Davis, representing the applicant, is also here for any questions of the council.
Counsel, any questions?
Mr. King, I have one question. It says a lot 19, but there are, how many did I count? 15 lots comprising Lot 19, and was A, B, and C, were they the original lots? Or was it always intended that there be a D through O?
Council President, I don't have a super detailed history on the property. What I can say is that the intent here is that, the wording is a bit confusing, because this is a, this is the zoning amendment that goes along with the re-subdivision. So the subdivision case was a re-subdivision of Lot 19, so those three existing units do not have lots until the subdivision is finally approved and recorded. That subdivision has been approved, but it's conditional upon this PUD amendment to take effect.
Yes, Rick. I'm Rick Davis, I represent the applicant, and you are astute to recognize that it should have been Gail Majors, not Gal. I represent BCLNL Acquisitions, which is the main applicant. The other applicant, applicants have appointed us for these purposes, to be their agent in front of you today. What I can tell you about the history of that Lot 19, it was all one lot, which is why it's listed as Lot 19 on the application. The original developers had gotten planned unit development approval for 15 units there, and then one or two months later in 2008, that same developer recorded restrictive covenants for Fairfield subdivision as a whole, and at the back of that recordation, there was a plat with demarcated lots A through O, representing each of these 15 individual lots. Our suspicion is that potentially they considered that creating lots of record going forward, and what happened was you had three people come in and buy those A through C, those are the individual applicants on our application, and build structures there. However, even those people had a lot of time getting financing for that purpose, because banks want to be able to go and see that you do have a lot of record as collateral before they go and finance these kind of sales, so the rest of it stayed in a stalemate. My client came in just a few years ago, and we hope to straighten out the probate court record as to those, well, really, as to all of the lots A through O, the original planned 15 lots of record.
So that kind of answered my question. Those are still the original 15 lots?
They are. They are. They are, except that the way it was built on the ground, the lot lines were supposed to have been equidistant between the structures. But the way the initial three builders have treated their lots have been such that the southern lot line coincides with their southern wall. And so what we have done on our proposed application is we've kept the distance between the structures, but we've made an accommodation so that they don't have to change what they view as their side yard for however long their structures have been there. But the rest of them are exactly the same as initially proposed, just by the, again, just by the plat on the back of the restrictive covenants of record from 2008.
All right. Any questions, counsel? Okay. Thank you, sir. We'll now open the public hearing. If you would like to speak to this PUD, if you please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Okay. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Counsel, this will lay over for final adoption, barring any motion for immediate consideration. I don't think that we need to be in a rush on this. And I would ask you to let it lay over as typical for this type of item. Okay? Hearing no motion for immediate consideration, we'll move on to item six. Item six is an ordinance to repeal and replace ordinance number 1576 to protect the public health, safety, and welfare by providing policy and procedures for sidewalk and our street usage within the city of Fairhope. Cheryl Lee?
Josh is here with me. We met with Jay and Jimmy about this. It's been like two weeks, right? And I'll let you, we came to some consensus about how to simplify this and, oh, is it on? Can you hear me? Okay. How to simplify some of these fees and then, and look at raising the rate of it and really just, like Civic Center, it was overcomplicated. Some of it was overcomplicated. And so we tried to make it clearer for people trying to rent the facilities, the parks and the streets, and then also raise it because again, like our other fees, they haven't been raised in a long time, a decade at least. So I'll let, Josh, you want to cover the actual rates?
Sure. So this is the parks. It looks like we're increasing the rates from $150 base rental per day. It'll be up to 250 for...
Hold on, let me stop you for a minute. We're on six right now, which is the sidewalk or street usage.
Okay. Pardon me.
That's okay.
It gets confusing because it's kind of the same...
I know it does. It's just the order that was put on there. We'll get to that one next.
Okay. So the street usage fee will be 150. That was the last ordinance. Now it's the proposed increase of $100 to 250, and that's for half day. And also 500 for a full day. Okay. Then another amendment that was going to be made was going to be doing away with a $1,000 cleaning deposit and just making it 500 for flat cleaning deposit, no matter how many people will be there. In addition to that, parade permits have been rolled in with this ordinance now or resolution, and it is going to be $3,500. So that's an increase of $1,000 for parade permit fee. And parade permit application will also need to pay the $500 security deposit for cleaning.
And I think we decided we're not going to call it a deposit. We were just going to call it a fee. Isn't that right?
Yeah, because one of the things we ran into in talking about this is, I think it was called a cleanup deposit.
Right.
Well, regardless of what has to happen, my question was, have we ever kept it? And the answer was no.
Actually, once we have since then.
Okay. All right. Well, so, and these are paid after Mardi Gras parades. And I said, if you don't keep it after a Mardi Gras parade, you know, and you're going to clean it up regardless, what are you keeping? And so I think what we talked about is changing it to a security deposit. So if something is damaged during that, then you can retain it. But, I mean, but to call it a cleanup fee or cleanup deposit is not really accurate. It's really a security deposit, like you'd pay for anything else. But, and I think, Cheryl Lee, we talked about the Mardi Gras parade permit hadn't been, had been the same since the early 80s, maybe. I mean, it's been, it had been...
For Mardi Gras, yes.
Pretty, so that was, and not charging anything piecemeal, barricades, anything like that. I mean, that's part of what you get.
We decided it was, it was just to, the auditing of individual barricades and, you know, you charged me for 52 and I only used 48. And who's going to, who's going to count every single barricade, you know, make sure that...
You can't have a flat fee for a barricade. That was, I'm glad you brought that up. This is one question I had was, I know y'all probably debated it.
We did.
Probably, you know, laborious for y'all to hear it from me again. But if you have, you know, maybe the police would say, well, based on this size of event, you need this many barricades and it's just included. But maybe there's a flat fee. I mean, there's multiple times, for instance, the steak cook-off that was held recently. We're just going to throw in barricades. There's quite a bit of city staff that goes into putting them out. And let's say that they rent the street for a full day and it's 500 bucks. They're going to be a nonprofit. They're going to get it for half that price. They're going to pay $250 and they're going to get, I don't know, there's a, there's a lot of barricades. And just asking a question. And it also applies to, I was going to ask it for the next one, item seven, anyway.
Well, what we ended up talking about was when, when you broke it down by trying to charge per barricade, you know, for the, and I'm using round numbers, but it was, you know, you needed 300 barricades at $20 a pop and you're talking about $6,000 for barricades. And you were already, you know, we were raising the fee from 25 to 35, and then we're going to charge them six grand for barricades. So it went from a $2,500 permit fee to almost $9,000 that they were paying, which seemed untenable in my personal...
But I see what you're bringing up, I don't think we actually brought that issue up. You're talking about renting a street and using barricades rather than a parade.
Well, yeah, but I was going to use the example, I did, I was going to use the example during the park, so let me just use it for that. Let's say that you don't have a fee in there for barricades. And let's just say that I throw a wedding party at the Bluff, at Henry George Park. What's to stop me from saying, I'm going to have 5,000 guests here and I need barricades? Now, I'm Joe Citizen and there's no way you can tell me no if you just told everybody else yes. That's my concern, is that as a citizen, we'll be able to demand the barricades. And I don't know how you say no. That's, and that could cost the city a lot of money in services. You can't stop it if you include it for somebody else. What you do for one, you got to do for them all, whether it be a nonprofit or an individual or business. I'm going to have Van Halen there. Five thousand people showing up and these barricades.
I don't think we considered Van Halen when we were discussing these possibilities.
We didn't talk about Van Halen. I was just thinking the same thing. How did we miss that scenario?
You know, I mean, I don't know. And again, like we talked about, trying to do this piecemeal or trying to, trying to take every possible scenario into consideration and coming up with one finite...
And I really did try to come up with a scenario that's plausible. I mean, it could have a large group of people that are just throwing a party there and they say, I want barricades.
But I mean, there's only so many barricades that you could use at the Bluff. And so, I mean, I would think whatever the square footage would allow would be as many barricades as we could put out.
We got to get a city truck, trailer, three or four men down there. It's a lot, it's a production, even if you're putting 20 of them out or 30 of them out. And then if you're going down to the street for something as large as, you know, a, I think a parade is different because it's a large fee that we're charging and that kind of offsets the cost. But it's the other events that could use a lot of resources. I'm just asking.
I think E S R T is probably our best example of something massive on the Bluff. And Richard, you would know better than I how many barricades they use for that. But that would be your Van Halen of Fairhope.
Sure. Exactly.
I think we're in the hundreds on that one. I mean, so, and I think the trailer holds about 150. I think we have to take the trailer down and I don't know if they use 100% of both trailers.
But to do that for them and then for anybody to say, well, I need them, I don't know.
I mean, my personal thought on that is that's just part of our community service. That's what you get when you live in Fairhope and you do something in Fairhope. You know, I mean, I, I get it, you know, but trying to monetize everything we do here, I mean, some of it is just a perk of being here, in my personal opinion. You know, because when you get in that, that situation of trying to, trying to charge for different things, for different reasons, it gets really tedious and hard to keep up with. And I think the simpler, the better for, not only for us, but for our employees and figuring out how to charge and what to do and getting the process streamlined. And that was at least my thought process in deciding that this was the best way to go.
Because that'd be very expensive. I mean, if you did put, if you're charging, what, 20 or 25 dollars and you put out 200 barricades, that's $5,000.
So make it $5.
Josh just made...
The flat rate, $500 for barricades.
Doesn't matter how many you use.
Or 250 or something.
Just to discourage somebody from saying...
And Josh made a great point just now, which didn't occur to me till he just said it, which is, you all have to approve the barricade usage here when someone comes and asks for permission.
Yeah, does somebody get to, I mean, I mean, maybe I've just not paid close enough attention, but, I mean, do people come and demand barricades or do they ask for them?
We've never had a cost for them, so they haven't been able to, we can't rent them because there was no cost schedule for that. We've only provided them for free because there was no cost schedule.
They make, but we can deny the request if we don't think it's suitable.
But if it's included in there, if you're, if it's included in the park usage or the street usage right now...
We have separate contract for services for the E S R T. We provide the services back to the city in exchange for the use of those barricades. And that's what we have. If you're okay to do it that way. Or you could charge a flat rate if you want.
We charge another $500 for barricades.
I think it's fair. I do.
Time is money and man-hours is a comment that I just heard behind me.
There's some events that won't require that many. I mean, less than 10. I mean, I don't think it's unreasonable to say 2 to 10 is a price or 2 to 50 and then something over that, a different price, because that does require more labor.
Jimmy and Jay, we might go back to the drawing board on the barricades.
No.
No, you want to hear it again?
This is it. No, I'm kidding. I'm always open for input. And so if this is...
Up to 10 is included, over 10 is $500?
Yeah.
I mean, who's going to need 10 unless they're hosting a petting zoo out there? I mean, that just seems like a...
I've had...
Hey, we want to include everybody, Jay.
To close Delamar.
To close Delamar takes 10.
Okay, well, that's...
I mean, it really doesn't take much more than 10.
Yeah, I mean, I guess there's always, I mean, yes, I am willing to reconsider this.
Well, if we need to, if we need to change it now, is the time to kind of reintroduce it with an amendment and then let it lay over, or we can let it lay over to the next meeting. But that would be a pretty material change if we were going to do it. I don't think that we would have to advertise it, but we would have to amend it now.
The only time we advertise is for public hearings and amending an ordinance. I advertise after these are adopted.
Right. Okay. Right.
Can you even host a petting zoo at the Bluff? Is that allowed? Is that...
Not in the rules that you can't.
Birthday party?
Man Halen and horseback.
I was about to say, we have a goose petting zoo, if you're brave enough.
Ferris wheel.
You know, I mean, I don't want to just throw something together and throw it on here.
You'll think about it.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I don't want to put it on there and then it not be right and then having to change it again. I'd rather at least take the time to try to come up with something that makes the best sense.
Well, do we have anything pressing that this is going to apply to that needs matching?
I think that the word is out and most people that knew we were discussing it have already filed their permits. Right. So, no, nothing.
Okay.
Yeah, we're okay.
Well, we can get together.
We'll do it again.
Again.
Okay. And so the park rental, the fee going up would include, the other thing along those lines, it would just include the appropriate number of garbage cans based on the size of the event, instead of a fee, separate fee for that. Okay. All right. Any questions, counsel? Okay. If not, we'll let that lay over till next meeting. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
You might want to stay there. Number seven, just in case. Number seven is an ordinance to repeal and replace ordinance number 1570, wrote over that, five, I believe.
1575.
That's 75. I had some, I had your name written on there, Cheryl Lee. To protect the public health, safety, and welfare by providing policy and procedure for park usage within the city of Fairhope. Do you want to go over the highlights of that now?
Yeah, that's just the same charge that was from before, $150. And we're doing away with charging utilities à la carte again with this and just making it a $250 flat fee for half-day rental. And anything over half a day is going to be 500.
My question on that, thank you for mentioning that again. What is the definition of a half a day and what's the definition of a full day?
That's a great question.
Four hours.
Four hours is a half day. Anything above that's a full day.
Four hours, one minute is a full day.
So, is there a limit on how long a full day is?
No, it's, I mean...
Go from eight to midnight?
Well, whatever the hours of the park are.
Yeah. Closes at 10, does it not?
Nine o'clock officially and they need to be out by 10.
Okay. That is a day, so nobody, Van Halen shuts down at 9, has to be out of there by 10.
And they'll be 7:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m.
Got it.
Okay. So 7:00, 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. are those hours, technically? Okay. All right. Anybody have any questions about this? Was there any other things you want to point out, other than the, the usage increase?
I think we just re-added some things that were a little complicated again. What the question you asked was the one thing that...
Yeah. Okay. All right. So no more additional hour type thing? Okay. All right. Okay. Yeah, I would suggest, just on that, if you're going to think about that, we just can bring it up. We'll let it lay over and bring it up in the next meeting. The only thing that I hear, any, any item or any component of that need discussion would be maybe the barricade portion of it. Anybody else want to discuss any of the other components of that? Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. Item eight, this is an ordinance to amend ordinance number 1510, known as the Personnel Rules, Policies, and Procedures Ordinance regarding Section 3. Hours of work and attendance, 3.02 recording time worked and 3.04 breaks and meal periods. More specifically exempt salary to employees not required to clock in and all non-exempt employees, that is, employees paid for all hours worked in excess of 40 hours in a work week to have an automatic deduction for unpaid meal period. This was discussed at the last work session in detail, as I recall. Staff, mayor was in favor. The supervisors seem to be in favor of that. And I believe this also does allow supervisors some leeway. And I believe, counsel, if I'm wrong, correct me, but I believe that the council was in favor of this as well. So before we go any further, if I can have somebody introduce that ordinance, please.
I introduce it.
Okay. Could have a discussion. Lynn, do you want to talk about that more? Let me hit the high points.
I can just quickly reiterate the reasons for doing this. We have two different scenarios where you can have somebody, when you're talking non-exempt employees, you can have someone who is working in a place nowhere near a clock to check out for a meal break and according to the personnel handbook, meal breaks are unpaid time. So we have a choice of either paying for unproductive time to get somebody to a clock to check out for their meal break and then to return again, so double the time. And we're paying for that in use of city vehicle. Or we're paying for somebody's meal break because they are not clocking out. This, when you have an auto deduct for meal break that takes care of the issue, the employee is protected, of course, if he or she needs to work through a meal break, checks the su... checks with supervisor, gets permission, and then they depart accordingly. Because if they're going to do that, it's usually because of a doctor's appointment or some personal time that they need to take. All of that is taken into consideration, but now everything filters through the supervisor who approves any deviation from the auto deduct. And they call the payroll administrator and it's taken care of.
Questions for Ms. Mazer, counsel? Any? Okay, the ordinance has been introduced. Hearing no further motions, this will lay over until the next council meeting as well. Okay, item nine is an ordinance to amend ordinance number 1510, known as the Personnel Rules, Policies, and Procedures Regarding Section 8, Employee Responsibilities and Conduct, 8.11 Use of City Vehicles. More specifically, the police department is authorized to take home city police vehicles who live outside the police jurisdiction. For one, within a 15-mile radius of the city of Fairhope Police Station located at 107 North Section Street. And two, the 15-mile radius only applies within Baldwin County. Would somebody like to introduce the ordinance?
I'll introduce it.
Okay, I think we did discuss this at length in the work session. Do we want to have any further discussion on this? Anybody want to try to make any changes to that? Change of heart? I think we had a good discussion. I think that you could, you know, you're never going to please everybody. It may never be perfect, but it's a little bit looser than it was in the past and will allow the officers to take home vehicles in places that they couldn't previously. So we'll let that lay over until the next meeting. Item 10 is a site plan approval, SR 18.03, at the request of Robert Cummings, a professional engineer with Hutcheson, Moore &amp; Rouse for site plan approval for Peter Van Lingen of Century Bank, generally located at the northwest corner of Edwards Avenue and North Greeno Road, 861 Edwards Avenue, Fairhope, Alabama. Mr. King.
Thank you, Council President, council members. The Century Bank location proposed by this action is on the west side of Greeno and as stated, at the intersection of Greeno and Edwards Avenue. We're here today because a site plan review was triggered for the site because the site will be more than 30% impervious, triggers a site plan review that comes before the city council. This actually fronts upon Edwards and as we discussed, is contiguous with Greeno. The recommendation is approval by staff and also by the planning commission. There are seven conditions of approval. And what I wanted to illuminate for the council is that the building permit process will cure each of those. The engineer of record has provided follow-up documentation for each of these items. And so that is reflected in their drawings. When we go through the building permit process, that will cure those items that this recommendation would require. Item number four, we had some assistance from Public Works Director Richard Johnson in approving that. And with that, Mr. Doug Bailey with HMR, the engineer of record for the site, he's here if we have any engineering questions.
Yeah, I would like to ask the gentleman from HMR, were there, are there any objections to any of these recommendations?
No, sir, we're asking-
No hardships caused to you?
No, sir, we're asking for recommendations about conditions.
Counsel, do you have any questions for Mr. King? Do you have any questions for the developer or the representative from HMR? Okay, if not, I'll ask for a motion for a site plan approval.
So moved.
You have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
You have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor of the site plan approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, site plan is approved. Thank you. Thank you, counsel. Item 11 is a resolution that the city of council, Fairhope hereby authorizes the mayor to sign all related application documents and agreements required to apply for Highway Safety Improvement Program grant related to the roundabout at the intersection of North Section Street, Highway 104, Veterans Drive, and Scenic Highway 98. Number two acknowledges if awarded the HSIP grant, the city will be responsible for funding the 10% required local match or $130,000 with appropriation by future separate resolution. Affirms if awarded the HSIP grant, Volker Incorporated as the engineer of record, and authorizes the mayor to establish not to exceed consultant fee to be set by ALDOT-FHWA required standards to be approved by council resolution. Mr. Johnson?
Yes, sir, our goal here is to get the application submitted and hopefully get an affirmative response that they're going to fund the project. And if that occurs, then we will be coming back to you first with the not to exceed for the engineering services and then hopefully with an open bid project to know how much it's going to cost.
Any questions for Mr. Johnson, counsel?
I'd just say that I think this is a great project. I certainly hope we get awarded, it's really needed in that intersection. It's very dangerous.
And we did confirm with our friends from the impact fees that we can use impact fees for our 10% match.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Richard.
Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion for resolution authorizing the mayor that we will fund the 10% and also naming Volker as engineer of record and authorizing the mayor not to exceed fee.
So moved.
Second.
You have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? I also kind of want to piggyback onto what Councilman Conyers said is that years before we had the two roundabouts on 13, this was the first location identified in Fairhope that was possibly in need of a roundabout. At that time, there was more pushback for roundabouts than there is now. And even when we approved the two on 13, we received a little bit of pushback. I wouldn't say a lot, but some. And to each of those citizens that had some reservation about a roundabout, we said, "Wait until they're completed and see if you like them and then come back and give me your opinion." I will go on record in saying that, as of today, I have not had one single complaint about either of those roundabouts. And I think that the people of Fairhope have come to recognize them as a useful tool. And so hopefully they'll embrace this as well. I think it's a great opportunity for us and I hope that we're awarded the grant as well. With that, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Okay, resolution passes, thank you, counsel. Item number 12 is a resolution that the marina manager is hereby authorized to purchase marina fuel. This will be marine-grade gas and diesel as needed to sell at the Fairhope docks and to establish the selling price of fuel based on an approved formula and report said fuel prices to the council in writing. Talked about this in the work session. I think I gave you what the simple formula was. The diesel included taxes because when we purchased it, it's not included. And the gasoline did not include taxes because when we purchased the gasoline, the gas is already taxed. So we'll entertain a resolution to authorize the marina manager to set the prices of the fuel and to report those to council.
So moved.
Second.
You have a motion and a second? Any further discussion?
Yeah, I just want to make sure, again, we don't get this priced too high. I don't know what the city pays for marine fuel.
Well, that was the reason we said it as a percentage instead of a fixed price of over and above because one of the marinas in Orange Beach, Robert, had a fixed, they had to set them out and I don't want to, and it's a competitive deal, so I don't want to reveal who they were. But, you know, it was something like 50 cents a gallon more for diesel and 75 cents for gas. And so if gas or diesel goes down a considerable amount, that percentage profit goes up. By setting it on a percentage basis as we did, I think it's fair to the consumer that they get the break as well. That answer your question, does that satisfy you?
It does. I hadn't bought fuel in marina boats that's on trailers, I don't know what marine fuel is.
I think that you'll find that it's a very fair, if you go down there and check the prices out. Now, it's a commodity, so it fluctuates, you know, day to day.
I've had several people with larger boats say they will continue to go across the bay if it is ridiculously priced, that's my lead.
I don't think that it will, but, you know, at that time, you know, we can certainly come back and change the formula as well. I think that we would do that. We actually set it so that it would be just below what the lowest price we found was.
Okay.
Okay. Where are we at, Clark? We have a motion and a second?
You have a motion and a second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? Okay, motion passes, thank you, counsel. Item 13 is a resolution that the compensation and job classification plan, along with the grade order sheet, be amended and approved to add the job position to special project manager and the job description and pay grade to pay for the same and amend the budget to fund this position and to defund the position of city clerk's assistant, which is the position that Ms. Mazer's been fulfilling for quite some time now. She has not been working as a city clerk assistant, although I'm sure she does assist Lisa from time to time and that they're practically in the same office. So anyway, any questions for that? I think that speaks for itself, councilmen, this shouldn't be a surprise to you. I don't think the pay stays, changes at all. And the pay grade, I believe, is the pay grade the same as well?
It's the same.
Okay, pay grade is the same. Counsel, I'll entertain a resolution to change the job classification plan and the grade order sheet be amended.
So moved.
Second.
You have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay? Okay, you are officially special project manager now. Or whenever the mayor signs it, so you will be. Okay, she'll probably have to move you into that position. Okay. Item 14 is a resolution that Mayor Karen Wilson is hereby authorized to execute change order number three to bid number 003-18 repairs to the Coyle Creek Clubhouse in the amount of $16,898.80 and award the change order to Platt Builders Incorporated. Mr. Johnson, in the work session, explained to us that as they got further into this, they found that there had been a wraparound porch around the building. There were some issues where the union of the structure and the old porch was that needed to be corrected, was not a part of the original bid. Think that Councilman Brown concurred with that, seemed logical. Mr. Johnson believes that that's logical. So do you have any questions for Mr. Johnson? Or Councilman Brown? Or Councilman Boone for that matter, he's pretty astute with construction as well? Okay.
No, they have.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion, passes resolution for the change order?
So moved.
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? Okay, motion carries, thank you, counsel. Item 15 is a resolution that Mayor Karen Wilson is hereby authorized to execute a contract for extension number one of RFQ number 003-17 hydrofluoric fluorosilic, fluorosilic acid, that's fluoride, for the water department with Water and Waste Specialties LLC for an additional one year. As per the terms and conditions of the original contract, the cost is $330 per 55-gallon drum. Intertain a motion for the-
So moved.
Say it.
You have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? Okay, motion carries, thank you, counsel. Item 16 is a resolution that the governing body of the city of Fairhope, Alabama, hereby rescinds bid number 014-18 for travel lift sale repaired at the Fairhope docks for the recreation department due to no bids being received and authorizes the city to solicit for informal bids in accordance with the public works bid laws pursuant to Code of Alabama 1975, Section 39-2-6B. If we have no bids, I guess we can rescind them. I'll entertain a motion, rescind bid?
Second.
You have a motion and a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? Okay, motion carries, thank you. Item 17 is a resolution, the governing body of the city of Fairhope, Alabama, hereby rejects bid number 012-18 for light packages for five tajos for the police department, authorizes the city to procure the lighting package through the Alabama State Law Enforcement Contract, which includes installation. The equipment and installation are off the Alabama State Department of Purchasing Bid List, therefore they do not have to be let out for bid. The total cost is $30,250, as discussed in the work session. I'll entertain a motion for this purchase?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I'm sorry, and also to reject the bid, to reject the bid and for the purchase. Okay, we have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? Okay, thank you, counsel, motion carries. Item 18 is a resolution that Mayor Karen Wilson is hereby authorized to execute a contract with SafeSpan LLC to provide professional bridge inspection services for bridge inspections for RFQ number PS017-18 with a not to exceed amount of $7,500. Mr. Johnson, if you could give us the highlight of that, please?
Yes, sir, this is something that we are required to do every two years. And this is budgeted in the public work professional service, so it is just going through the procedure of professional services.
Absolutely, thank you, Mr. Johnson. I'll entertain a motion to pass this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the services. Any further discussion?
Does this cover all the bridges in town? Okay.
Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay? Okay, motion carries, thank you, counsel. Item 19 is a resolution, the city council approves the selection of Volker Incorporated to perform professional engineering services for urgent bay downfall assessment and repairs and approves and accepts the not to exceed amount of $25,000 and hereby authorizes Mayor Karen Wilson to execute a contract with Volker Incorporated for the same.
So moved.
Second.
Did any give Mr. Peterson a chance? You have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? How long is it estimated this will take once they get started? How long is it estimated this repair will take? I've had that question several times. I mean, what, once they start, I mean, from-
Well, we're trying to develop three different techniques. One of the techniques will require quite a bit of dredging to expose the entire pipeline, but one technique may be to do it from inside, which I know sounds far-fetched, but there's some people looking at that. Hopefully it won't take a week, but, you know, we're working in an active body of water.
A week or two is a pretty good estimate though, right? If somebody asked the question, week or two, once they start?
And that week starts, bear in mind, a week starts, it's going to take us two or three weeks to get plans together, a month to bid it, you know, another two weeks to get a contract executed and that's when the two weeks, plus or minus weather, would start.
So Volker will sub this to someone else?
Sir?
So Volker will sub this repair to someone else?
No, they're going to help me prepare the plans to bid.
You said you had to get some bids out.
Yeah, we'll have to put together a plan set to bid the repair work. Contractors capable of doing that work will bid that work.
Oh, this is, I'm sorry, oh, this is only for the engineering? Okay, I don't know where I'm at. Yeah, thank you. I got you now.
And, yeah, $25,000 is a lot of money. And if you want, but I'm doing my best to get involved enough in the process to mitigate their time.
I don't believe Volker's in the business of getting real wet.
Sir?
I don't believe Volker's in the business of getting real wet fixing this.
No, I don't think so either.
I was getting a step ahead of myself there.
They'll tell somebody else just how to do it, though.
Okay.
And I would suspect by the end of September, the project should be complete.
Okay, all right, thank you, Mr. Peterson. All right, we have a motion and a second? Any further discussion, any further questions? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? Okay, motion carries, thank you, counsel. Item 20 is a resolution, the city of Fairhope vote to purchase 22 fire hoses for the Fairhope Volunteer Fire Department. The items are available for direct procurement through the Houston-Galveston Area Council contract, therefore it does not have to be let out for bid. They've already been nationally bid through the HGAC's bid process. The cost for the fire hoses is $12,078. Intertain a motion to purchase the fire hoses?
So moved.
Second.
You have a motion and a second? This is a budgeted item. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? Okay, purchase is approved, thank you, counsel. Item 21 is a resolution, the city of Fairhope vote to purchase four in-car and six body camera systems with applicable accessories for the Fairhope Police Department from WatchGuard Incorporated. The vendor is the exclusive and sole source manufacturer for this equipment. This system is available for procurement without formal bidding provided by the Code of Alabama. The total cost is $31,320, which is slightly under budget, counsel. Can I entertain a motion to purchase these?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second? Any further questions for Mr. Hammer, or Lieutenant, sorry? Okay. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the purchase, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, resolution passes. Thank you, counsel. Item twenty-two is a resolution, the City of Fairhope vote to purchase equipment and installation for four twenty-eighteen tajos for the police department. This type of equipment is on the Alabama State Department of Purchasing Bid List, therefore, does not have to be let out for bid, whether not to exceed cost of twenty-eight thousand three hundred and eighty dollars. I'll entertain a motion for this?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for this budgeted item, coming in slightly under budget, counsel. Any questions? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay, motion passes. Thank you, counsel. Item twenty-three is a resolution, the City of Fairhope vote to purchase SCADA System Annual Software and Maintenance Agreements for the electric, water, and gas departments from the surveillant technology as sole source distributor, and authorizes procurement based on the option allowed by the Code of Alabama, contractual services and purchases of commodities for which there's only one vendor or supplier, and contractual services and purchases of personal property, which by their very nature are impossible to award by competitive bidding. The total cost will be twenty-one thousand dollars. That is also budgeted, counsel, in that amount. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion to purchase the SCADA systems, and seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, resolution passes. Thank you, counsel. Item twenty-four is a resolution to approve the procurement of flower plantings for the Public Works Department in the amount of thirty-three thousand four hundred and one dollars and fifty cents. I'll entertain a motion for the purchase of the flowers.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? In the words of Mr. Allen earlier, "I don't care what they cost, get the flowers." Okay, any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the procurement of flower plantings, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, procurement is approved. Thank you. Item twenty-five is a resolution, the City of Fairhope vote to procure the municipal court module to the city's munis system from Tyler Technologies for the municipal court. The estimated total cost is ninety-nine thousand four hundred and eighty-one dollars, which includes software implementation, conversion, maintenance, travel expenses, and annual recurring fees, and authorizes the use of correction funds for this expenditure up to fifty thousand dollars, and the remaining unbudgeted amount from the general fund. I did receive a call from our municipal judge this morning, encouraging us to approve this, saying that it will pay for itself. Not exactly sure where the fifty thousand dollars is going to come from. Mayor, can you find the additional fifty thousand?
From correction funds?
The additional fifty thousand.
Oh.
That pays for half.
There's also a fund for the court. Do we know what that fund?
Well, let me say it this way, too, Mayor. Another way is that we cannot budget what the courts generate in revenue. It's just against the law for us to budget that, but we do know that we do get revenues from that, but, so that you don't get in the habit of saying we need to raise revenue by issuing fines or whatever. I think that's why they have the law, that you can't budget it, but we do know we have an income stream for that. I would assume that we could probably, hopefully, we're gonna make forty-nine thousand on that this year, so we could fund it.
I'm not sure, but we can find out what the, the amount is. I hadn't known that that was.
It's about twenty thousand a month.
So, yeah, well, actually, I think it's more than that.
A month?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I must double that.
We'll find it, right?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to procure the modules.
So moved.
Second.
We have a second? Okay, we have a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor to procure the munis system for the court, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Item twenty-six is a resolution to award a bid for a walking floor garbage trailer for the Public Works Department to Warren Truck and Trailer with a total bid proposal of seventy-seven thousand dollars.
Thirteen thousand, order. What is that exactly?
That is, budget item, that is what we move solid waste from the transfer station to the landfill den. It's a very large trailer that has a floor that actually walks the garbage out of it to unload it, very, very handy feature. Thirteen thousand under budget.
Y'all getting good at over-budgeting things, so you can say that, I'll tell you that. You wanna be under budget, just over, over-budget it. Now, you're doing good, thank you. All right, I'll entertain a motion to purchase the walking floor garage garbage trailer.
So moved.
Second.
Here we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, purchase is approved. Thank you, counsel. Item twenty-seven is a resolution to award a bid for the Fairhope Library envelope repairs, bid number zero zero five dash eighteen to NW Rogers Construction Company LLC with a total bid proposal of one million ten thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars, and amends the budget to fund the overage of four hundred and sixty thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. Who can answer questions to this from the city? Could you do that, please? My, my question is this. There does, I know that I've been a lot, there's been a lot of talk about construction costs going up, and, and that's true, but the price has gone up, you know, forty-five, forty-six percent, and I don't think construction costs have gone up that much. Has the scope of work increased that much? Is that the, I got somebody saying yeah, and somebody saying no.
The, the first go-around, nothing was really based off fact. We didn't have a building survey like we did this time. I mean, the second go-around, we, we actually tested that building and every corner of it and tested it for leaks. We recreated the rain effect. The first go-around, it was kind of, just kinda looked at it, and, and we thought maybe we knew what was going on, the architect that was handling it, and when it went out to bid, there was not nearly as much fact that went into it as it is this go-around.
So when they gave us a pre, you know, an estimate of what it would cost, they didn't include all of that?
Well, not, not removing windows and the stuff that's actually wrong with the library. You know, the, I'm not gonna go in detail and talk about anybody, but the first go-around, it's a totally different situation than what it is now that GMC's doing it.
I wanna hear what you have to say.
Um, when, whenever we received the bids, we were expecting that the actual construction, it was around the original estimate, but we did not take into account the high profile of the project, and also with the building being occupied. So I think there are a lot of different factors that increased the price for the contractor, and a lot of the contractors are busy right now. So we had a lot of interest, and they all seemed to back out last, last minute, and so then we only received two contractors' bids.
Okay, y'all have any questions, counsel?
I guess my, my one question was, was GMC the one who had estimated it at about five fifty, or was that somebody else?
That was us.
Okay.
We did not take into account, I think, the, everything that all the contractors did. We did just solely what the construction material cost would be for the repairs, and not the additional of having to secure the building with occupants in it, and all the additional security around the library.
And there were three bids? And there were three bids?
I think two.
Two bids? Okay, I thought I saw three.
I will say, they were, both the bids were reputable companies with good reputation, and, and, I mean, as much as it hurts, I don't think it needs to be repaired. We can't keep kicking the can down the road.
There's no question about that, but there's also a line to be drawn in the sand as to what, you know, what if it came in, you know, two million, I'm just throwing out a number, if it came in two million overestimate, do we do that because we say we gotta repair it, and that's an unreasonable cost? I know that it wasn't in your scope of work, but have you been able to go back and look at what's additional work that needs to be done, and think that that is a, is there, is it a reasonable cost now, being four hundred and sixty thousand over? Do you concur that one million eleven thousand dollars instead of five forty is a, a reasonable cost for what we're getting?
I think that with how busy the contractors are right now, and how the amount of publicity the project will be with the public being around.
So what you're saying is a public outcry to get it done is, is, is allowing them to drive the, the price up on us. That's what it's doing.
Well, I think also.
Because we're all saying, we gotta do it at no cost, and if we say that to every contractor that comes in here, they're gonna continue to raise the cost on us thirty, forty, fifty percent, so I gotta message to these contractors, I, this is ridiculous.
Well, the other, the, the flip side of that is, the fact that it's a public project, if it goes wrong, and they're the ones that did the work, and they're taking the public blame for it.
Hopefully, they'll take accountability when there's problems in the future.
They just know we have so much political pressure to do it, they're raising the price considerably. So she's, she's telling us that.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I, I think it needs to be done. Obviously, I think the library needs to be fixed. You know, the only, the only, the heartburn, the biggest heartburn I have with this is there, there are so many other priorities that we have that need to be funded right now with infrastructure upgrades. Increasing this by four hundred and sixty thousand dollars is just almost an intolerable pill to swallow, but I know that it needs to be done, but I don't wanna see this done at the expense of something else that we deem a higher priority, and that's my biggest question right now.
I guess I just keep thinking, the library's what, a twelve million dollar building, and, and when it rains, it just leaks right back in.
Look at it this way, it's, divide ten years into it. That's really the per, you know, the annual upgrade. It had, there's nothing that's been sunk into the library for, for ten years, and that's with all of our infrastructure. This is, we're gonna have to invest a lot over a short period of time because of long-term neglect, not just with our buildings. The library is one in many. It's, it's all of the infrastructure.
The issue's not whether or not we need to fix it, or whether or not, you know, that there, you're taking an annualized cost and doing it all at one time. My big issue is that we just succumb to pressure and spend another four hundred and sixty thousand dollars because the contractor knows they can get away with it.
But I think the budget was off, and I think if you go out and rebid it to three new contractors, I don't think you're gonna get it for five hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Not when you happen, not when you sit in a council meeting telling your room to pay whatever, because people are gonna keep complaining that we're not spending any money on it to get it fixed, and it's been leaking forever. I mean, they're just gonna continue to do it.
You can go back and look, I said this was gonna be about a seven or eight hundred thousand dollar project. The scope of the work changed, the, the, none of the testing, I don't know if the, none of the testing had been done with the original estimate was given, so they didn't even know what the scope of the work, I mean, you're just arbitrarily trying to grab a number of what it's gonna cost to fix it, without even knowing what you got to fix. So then you, you do this extensive testing, and like you said, like Lance said, this approach is a lot more thorough than what was done previously, and even not, not having all the facts, trying to throw a number out there. Right, and the last person to touch it is kinda, it's kind of like the, the travel lift at the marina, the last person to touch it owns it. And so, I mean, there's a lot being said with the, the issues that we've had with it, I mean, that's, that's a, that's a big, a big card to hold. The fact that it's gotta stay open the whole time that they're working on it, that's a big card to hold. I'm not saying that it justifies the cost, Mr. Burrell, but.
I can't believe GMC missed a number that much. I think they probably took that in, they probably also put contingencies in there as well. I don't know.
Well, the other thing, I mean, to, to spend this kinda money, if, if it didn't work, if we still had leaks, then that would be the intolerable pill to swallow.
Yeah, I mean, I'm thinking about a, a courthouse in the, or a city building very near to us that has had continued repairs and continued leaks on their roof, and no matter how much money they throw at it, it just continues to seem to have issues, and I just don't wanna be in that same situation, where we do this, and then it's, well, that was most of the issue, but here's another thing we discovered later on, it just, and I know there's no way to guarantee that. It's just, you know, it is, it's a budget buster, and it just, you know, it's, it's hard to swallow, but I, I get it, it's.
It's a complex building.
Something that needs to be done.
It would be great to get our buildings up to the point where we're just maintaining them, and we have a long way to go.
Yeah, yeah, a lot, more, more time on preventative maintenance as opposed to repair and reconstruct after it's dilapidated to the point of disrepair.
It can't be argued that it needs to be done, that, that's, that's a given. The question is, are we gonna, everything we do from here on out, when people are watching this video, they're saying they'll do it at any cost, and so where do you stop the bleeding? Because it's gonna continue for every project that we have. We haven't had anything come on, in, on budget lately, nothing. We plus-ups on everything, just ten percent here, thirty thousand there, forty thousand, fifty thousand, a hundred thousand. And they watch us, and they say, "Well, you know, Fairhope, public's gonna get on them if they don't do it."
So, so let's walk through the process, if you were to reject the bid, bids, and go back to the drawing board, I mean, how, how long does that delay it, and, and what if we don't save any money?
Yeah, well, I know, it may not, it has no guarantee, I know, that's the catch-22. That is the problem.
The only way I see, and I'm probably gonna get rocks thrown at me, the only way I see to save money would be if, if you put it back out with the option to, to close it for part of the construction. And I don't know if that's an option with y'all, I do think that that influenced the price a whole lot.
Like, how much?
I can't, I can't give a number, but I feel like that influenced the price.
I'm just wondering if there was some of the services that could be done somewhere else? I mean, it's just a question, you know?
Yeah, I mean, what, I mean.
I mean, you think about, you think about pulling those big round windows out, and those storefront windows, and having to get them covered up so they can stay open and operating, and, and, you know, all the, all the great big windows have got to come out.
Would there be a way to only close a portion of it, what, that would, I mean, you know?
Absolutely. I mean, anything. I, I think, I think it's a liability to us to keep some, you know, during some stages of that project, to, to actually have it open and have the public in there with it, you know, and, and underneath it, with it going on. We, we, we should, we should probably discuss it.
Why, why did we decide to try to keep it, I mean, now, now I'm hearing something that sounds like a liability issue, to try to keep it open with this heavy construction going on in certain areas? I mean, is that something that we've?
It was never an option to close it, in my, in my eyes.
I mean, I, I think shutting the library down would be a mistake, you know, for any extended period of time, but if there was a way to, you know, I mean, to, to rope off this area as it's under, under construction, under repair, you know, and close that area.
I mean, that's gonna have to happen regardless, but that's gonna have to happen regardless. I mean, there's just no way you can do some of it.
What else do you see that would benefit closing it, other than those windows across the back, clear store?
Oh, well, just the noise factor, the noise factor of construction going on, the, the, the backside of the library's gonna have to be a, a lay-down yard for materials and equipment and lols and such, so, I mean, you're gonna have some, a few parking issues. I mean, there's gonna be actually some bricks having to come off the building, where the roofing has to go up behind it and actually go up to where it's supposed to be. There's, there's quite a bit of, quite a bit of stuff that's got to, to go on, and it's gonna affect even the sidewalks outside the library.
What's the estimated time of construction, I can't remember?
I doubt it, I'm not gonna answer that question.
I believe it's six months in the bid. I think that the big area of concern is where the low roof is to the high roof. That roof to walk at the juncture is where a lot of the links or leaks are coming in. I think that you, the problem with that double height space is that's where pretty much that connects all the other spaces. So I think that if partial time of the construction time that was shut down to fix that whole area, then they could do the remainder of the, of the work on the exterior envelope of the building. So not the whole entire duration would require everything to get shut down, but for the work where those double height windows are and ordering those windows, you're, we're basically taking off the bottom satellite and taking and putting in smaller windows so that there's enough flashing height underneath the windows that will help a lot of the leaks.
Yeah, I think. Or if it'd be something worth pursuing, I mean, not, not only the cost savings to the, to the city, but the liability, you know, reduction. If the contractor was able to close it for, you know, say, two weeks, he goes in there and gets those windows pulled and replaced.
And we, we, that's not something that was included in the big, in the bid, it was, we basically said that the building was going to be occupied the whole time and that the contractor had to work around the public and the workers.
Is there a way legally we could ask for a timeframe they would require?
I think you can negotiate a deductive change order for ten percent, if that helps.
Just going to knock off a hundred thousand.
If anything more than that, if you're looking to reach for the stars with this, you're looking at rebids.
We've got some representatives from the library here, I mean, I'd like to hear from them about the, the idea of at least of closing it for two weeks, I mean, and how that would affect them.
Any options to work at night?
Our understanding was, when we had meetings with the engineering company, was that we, after the engineering or company or, because the contractor was chosen, we would sit down and knowing, with him knowing what his government work is and try to work out a plan that if we needed to close, it would be minimal, but, you know, and then, like you said, trying to rope off areas. Because we were under the understanding that when those large windows were taken out, I assumed we would be closed to that. But then there were other areas that we could remain open. And I feel like I could speak for the board to say that we'd be willing to work something out, but we didn't know, we, I was under the pressure, we were going to sit down after the bid was aborted and talk to all people involved, all stakeholders and see what we could work out to mentally close, but if we needed to close, it was, so. We definitely feel like it's something that needs to be done and, you know.
So you guys have anticipated at least the possibility, or considered that some areas would have to close and at least the possibility that the library itself would have to close, at least for some limited amount of time?
Right. But with trying to have staff still working on projects and things that could work in the back.
Right. Just be close to the public, but, but let staff do.
Let some of the staff do still.
Yeah, I mean, if there was, if there was, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, we've got some huge projects that we're doing that want to get done this summer, so.
If there was some possibility to negotiate maybe a ten percent reduction, if it was to be closed during some of these more heavy construction issues, I mean, ten percent on this is a hundred thousand dollar deduction on this contract, which would be.
Hundred thousand dollars.
Not to say whether they do it or not, but.
Right. How much time do we have before we have to award the bid? Do you know? Forty-five days? Thirty days? And I don't know when we bid.
The eighth, May eighth.
May eighth. May eighth? So we can reach out pretty quick. But you'd have to call a special meeting if you're waiting on awarding it based on a.
And not just closures, but I mean, there's other things that could be done to possibly value engineer that cost down without cutting corners and, and having an inferior product. I mean, I'm sure if you meet with the contractor, there's things they would propose that might provide some savings to try to get, you know, that ten percent number down.
Been through it pretty thorough, yeah.
Okay.
It's just, it's extensive, it's an extensive project and it's not going to be fun for, for anybody, but it's, it's something that's, I feel like, you know, I'll never say that we would a hundred percent stop every leak there because that would be.
Don't say that.
That would be setting myself up for failure.
Sure.
Do I think we're going to stop, you know, the majority of them? Absolutely. I think we would stop ninety-some percent of them. I hope we stop them every one, but there's, there's a possibility, you know, I mean, I would never say that we'd stop every one. There's a rhyme or reason for every step that's getting done. And it's, it's a very high-profile building. I mean, everybody in this part of the country knows Fairhope Library leaks and, and so, that being said, you know, it's, if I was a contractor, I would, I mean, it can, it might make or break you whether you fixed it or not, you know, if it's a total flop, you're going to wear that for a long time. And if you don't believe it, ask the last guy, the guy that built it.
Something else that's going to wear on you is when you jack the price up because of demand, when times get slow, you're going to look back at these people again and say, hmm.
It'll catch you too.
I remember that.
Yeah, that will catch.
Do you think, if you allow a closure of a certain, you know, two week period, just on two weeks out there to pull those windows and replace them, do you think a lot of people didn't submit bids based on that one element?
I wouldn't say.
Being the major pain and the, you know, what factor?
I wouldn't say it was that one element, I think it was probably the combination of everything.
So I guess my question, do you think you would get more bidders if you allowed a period of closure?
I think I would think so.
I would think so. I don't know, you know, every time I've ever rebid something, it always got higher. That's, that's, that's what I'm scared of. And so, I don't know, I don't know what else to say about it, but I would be scared that, you know, could we negotiate, maybe get the ten percent off, if it's legal? I mean, I would definitely try that. I'd be scared to put it back out.
Yeah.
And I think the two companies that bid, again, I mean, if they were from out of town, if I didn't know who they were, never heard of them, I would, I would be probably in favor of rejecting and rebidding, but knowing a little bit about both of them, I feel like, I feel like we're probably getting a pretty fair and honest bid, is my impression. I mean, I don't think they're just jacking it up just to try to make money because they know we need to get it fixed.
Well, the engineer said that she thought that that was a factor, she didn't use those terms, but she said.
I think it's more demand.
I think it's more of a demand that they've got all the work that they need right now and prioritizing it. I mean, right now is a terrible time to go build a house, you know? I mean, Robert Brown's probably as busy as he can be, right?
Terrible time to be a baker, too.
Fair enough, fair enough.
What, let me, let me ask a question about, I want to point something else out, if you, if you go to the resolution, item twenty-seven, it also says it amends, this, this resolution amends the 2018 budget to fund the overage. We can leave that in, it'll probably roll over into the next budget year because it won't be completed where we could fund it from the 2019 budget. I'm just getting kind of into the weeds on the resolution. It may be something we can consider, we can add it to the 2019 budget. Because right now, nobody's telling me where the 2018 budget's going to get another four hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. There is some comments in here that there is X amount of dollars in our capital funds budget, which we could take it from, and yes, we could. But something else to consider as you, if you make a motion to pass this resolution, you might want to just think about that language for a minute.
And I want to remind you that when we entered the budget into munis, we did discover close to a million dollars in duplicate expenses. I mean, it's fixed and there's nothing, we discussed it or sent an email when this happened because it's only to our favor, but I do want to point that out as well.
Anybody?
Let me, let me just ask this last question. So if we, if we award this bid as proposed tonight and then the contractor goes back with the, with the engineer and discusses with the library board closings and everything else, and they agree to something that allows them to reduce the cost of what they thought it was going to take, is that doable under these circumstances?
But once they're awarded, they don't have to do, they don't have to come down, they don't have to take the change order. No, they don't have to take the change, you're better trying to negotiate it before you're awarded.
Right, once it's awarded.
Well, that's, that's my point, I mean, once we've, I mean, I understand, okay.
Yeah, once you're awarded, state law gives you a ten percent leeway.
Right, but, but once it's awarded, I mean, it's, it's, that's at the contractor's discretion or whether he comes off or not.
They don't have much to say to.
Well, if he's a reputable contractor, he may, he may give you seventy-five cents on the dollar.
If it were, if it were me doing it, it would be worth the cost.
I don't know, we've got two contractors on the council, y'all tell us.
That depends on how big they are.
Counsel, I'm going to entertain a motion to award the bid.
So moved.
Second.
Any more discussion? I'm going to vote to award it, but I'm going to throw up on myself when I do.
I will tell you, on one side of it, you've got, you know, you've got a million, both bids are well over a million dollars, which are both well over what we had expected. And I don't believe they got together and talked about this, I think they feel that, you know, with two reputable contractors, these are, this is the expense of it, you're within twenty, I think twenty-six percent of each other, so I don't, I don't really think, I think it's more to do with the fact that you're going to have to live with this baby for a long time and it has had some problems, to be quite frank with you. So I just don't want to see you throw up on yourself just because.
I'm going to do it anyway.
Yeah, I mean, I, it's not that I don't believe their numbers are accurate, it's just, you know, it may have been that the initial number was not accurate and we're basing this heartburn on the change in the initial number in this one as opposed to just getting the real number and this is what it is. It's just, when you see that change, it's just.
And you have that factor of what do I run into?
Right, that's right.
Just the soaking unforeseen on that big bill.
Because I can tell you, the high bidder almost exclusively does exterior stripping and refinishing, I mean, that's almost all they do, so, so they definitely, they know what the project entails and what, what to expect, so.
All right, we have a motion in a second, any more discussion? Okay, y'all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Public participation, if you have anything else to bring forth before the council, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Shoot the messenger.
Oh man, Dan's got plenty of money, he'll throw a little bit on it.
Dan Stankowski, 205 White Avenue. Thank you so much for passing that resolution. I know that was a bitter pill to swallow, but let me tell you what, I commend Tamara and her staff. I don't know if you guys have been there during a rainstorm and see the tarps in the pans, in the pots, in the bathtubs, sitting around preventing additional damage to the library. This goes back to neglect, not on, not on this administration, but in past administrations. The belts for the air conditioner were bought at the auto parts store. The watering truck that watered the flowers was instructed not to put water on the landscaping at the library. The library has been neglected and when you neglect something, it comes home to roost. And if we had started on this, when it started leaking, I was on the council then, and that's a long time ago, that's ancient history, but it was leaking then. And so now, you know, eight, ten years later, costs have gone up. Kick the can down the road and it'll go up again. Anyway, thank you so much for that. Thank you also, my power was out at my house and the neighborhood when I came in, my wife sent me a text, the power's back on. Thank you, City of Fairhope, I appreciate that. Also, when I was on the council, roundabouts came up. I know you dusted off the Volkerd Engineering, I was chairman of the streets committee and my opponent hung a big sign out there at that Veterans Corner, hanging that whole shebang around my neck. Anyway, thank you, roundabouts are in, we were doing it then, let's see, one other item. Thank you for your service. I now know that, I'm glad that I'm not sitting where you are. It's a tough job, it's, it's really a tough job and I appreciate it. And again, Tamara, thanks to you and your staff for the work that you've done and thank you guys for the work that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Seeing no one, I'll close public participation and ask for a motion for adjournment. So moved. A motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay, all right, we're adjourned, thank you.